Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the April 8th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting and ask you if you have cell phones, pagers, or any other electronic devices that might squawk. If you would turn those off at this time, we would appreciate it. Hopefully, we can get through a lot of this fairly quickly today. First Order of Business is approving the minutes of the March 25th meeting. Leave approval?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. The minutes are approved. Next, it's continuance requests.
We have three uncontested requests for continuance. Item 12, a request to continue until April the 22nd, and items 13 and 14 have been withdrawn.
Is there anyone here who came to talk to us about items 12, 13, or 14 today? If you give us your name and address, please.
It's Nolan Hall, and the address is 14900 North Serra Road. I just wanted to speak in oppose opposition to the plan for the mobile home park rezoning there at a neighboring property of ours, but it could wait. I can wait to address that on the 22nd.
Well, presumably, that's when the applicant would be here to explain to us exactly what it is they want to do.
Very good.
So, we've got your phone number. I'll make sure that the staff lets you know if there's another continuance request on this item. We will call you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item 12, 13, or 14, commissioners?
Move the uncontested continuances.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes, and that is approved.
We have three new requests for continuance. Item four, which is S P U D 552, a request to defer until May the 13th. Item six, S P U D 547, a request to defer until April the 22nd. And item 10, which is D A 22973, a request to defer until April the 22nd.
And again, the same question. Did anyone come here today to talk to us about items four, six, or 10?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. I am here on item four and item six. On item four, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We request the continuance to May 13th to meet with some of the neighborhood associations and the people in the area. The last time this came up, there was a protester here who was not notified that it had been continued. I've called her, I've called several other people, and left word, both in person and on their voicemail. Several people indicated that they would also let their neighborhood associations know, so we did our best to get the word out there, and I don't know if anyone showed up. But on the other one, number six, we are requesting that one to be moved two weeks.
Okay. I think Commissioner Hensley and I would be interested in participating in the discussion on item four when you get that organized.
Yeah, we'll keep you guys in the loop whenever we get those meetings set up.
Thank you. Any other discussion, commissioners, item four, six, or 10? Anyone else come to talk to us on those items? Motion?
Move the continuance.
Okay, we have a motion to continue items four, six, and 10. Cast your votes, and those are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any continuance requests from the public? Okay, we'll move on to our cases then.
There is nothing on the consent docket today. Item one on items requiring separate vote is S P U D 553, which is an application by Commercial Permits Express to rezone 6415 North Kelly Avenue from our one single family to S P U D 553 in Ward 7.
Good afternoon. Dean Dives with Commercial Permits Express, here to present the application and also let you know that we reviewed the T E's and we agree with all of them.
Okay, commissioners, no one has signed up?
I have just one question, is that I didn't see in the S P U D or anything in the staff report requiring sidewalks.
No, sir, I didn't either.
And isn't that our policy, that we do sidewalks? J.J.?
Sidewalks are required by the ordinance for any new construction on arterial streets, so anything that new that gets built would be required sidewalk.
Are you building something new?
Along 63rd Street there, see where the building is located on the map? There's a building that's already built there.
Yeah.
That one currently does have a sidewalk, so as that other property gets developed, there will be a sidewalk that comes down too.
Because you have to.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's right, J.J. Okay. I move approval of the application.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve item one. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you. Item two is A B C 710, an application by Hoyt and Carrillo for an A B C 3 overlaying the I-2 Modern Industrial District at 2321 South Robinson Avenue in Ward 7.
Is the applicant here? We will move this item to the heel of the docket then and see if the applicant appears.
Here.
Are you the applicant on item number three? Mr. Carrillo? Is your telephone on?
No, it's off.
Okay, thank you. Give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you want to do.
My name is Jerry Rodriguez Carrillo, and the business address, it is 2321 South Robinson. And, excuse me, I am applying for a liquor license.
Now, you're applying for an A B C 3. You want to sell mixed drinks at this location, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's been a beer tavern in the past?
For the past 30 years at least. People said before 40 years, but it's been a beer bar for that long.
Are there? Is it going to continue as a beer bar, or do you want to serve beer and mixed drinks?
I would like to serve mixed drinks.
Okay, all right. Now, you gentlemen indicated you're here in protest. I didn't, but should have told you about signing up. We will hear you one at a time if you want to come and address us and tell us what your You need to come to the microphone over here. Give us your name and address and tell us.
I'm Dr. John N. Hatfield, and I'm the general manager of C S I, which is Cognitive Systems Incorporated, on 2328 South Harvey Avenue. I submitted a letter earlier that was required.
We have your letter.
You do have the letter. And so, not to totally repeat everything it says in there, we've been there now since, what, 2003, and we have experienced a tremendous amount of difficulties, especially on the weekends and the nights on our property. So, I have four lots with paved parking there. And not only the debris, but the drug exchanges and alcohol and beverage things, condoms and so forth, stored around the property in the areas I have to clean it up. We have not had any break-ins or trouble at our business as such. It's built like the Rock of Gibraltar for one reason, but we have during the day, up until around 5:00, maybe 6:00 o'clock sometimes in the evenings, I have children over there that we do the neuropsych eval evaluation for the learning disabilities. Our business is cognitive development for both the children and adults who have difficulties from everything from traumatic stress to post-traumatic stress, TBI, strokes, and so forth, and of course, with children with various disabilities. And it rewires the brain through the process of neurogenesis. I guess my protest is that I really don't feel like we're real close to a park area, we're close to school, and I have my business right there, that this would be advantageous to have something like this to be approved.
Okay, commissioners, any questions of Dr. Hatfield?
May I? Excuse me.
We'll give you your turn, don't worry.
Okay.
You'll have a chance.
I'm L.D. Harden. I live at 2324 South Harvey. The last eight years, we've had problems with people coming in from the bar, prostitutes coming in the parking lot. We've run them all. I've got, live next door to John's business. We put a chain up and blocked the driveway coming off of 23rd because we've had, I don't know how many cars that have had impounded since we've done that because they got to come in in front of my house, and I've got a driveway alert, and when they come through and it goes off, I go out and check it. And then I back my car across the driveway on the west side, and then I call the police and have the car impounded. We've got the parking lot is posted, no parking. But for the last eight years, you can check the police records, we've had nothing but problems. They tell us that it's all coming from the bar over there, the prostitutes, the drinking. I've lived there 37 years. I've got two grandkids, great-grandkids that stays with me a lot. They can't even go out in my yard because of what's going on in the parking lot. And I don't think he has enough parking over at his bar. I don't know how many parking spaces he should have, but I don't think he has near enough. David's here, he's got a place that's next to him.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who wants to?
Good afternoon. My name is David Brown. I own 2301 and 2317, which is connected to his place right there. I've had just about nothing but trouble out of them. I've got, I let them park out in front of my warehouse, which is connected to them. I've been nice enough to do that as long as they keep out of my gates. I've got some gates that if I've got to get in the back of my property for anything, drive a vehicle back there, I cannot get back there unless I have to go into the bar and find out who is driving the vehicle that's parked in my gates. I've been cussed at, I've been, I mean, just damn near fist fighting to get people to move out of my gates. Now, this isn't just him, this is before him. I mean, I've owned the property on 2301 since 89, 1989, I've owned that. And I tell you what, it's just been a big heartache. And he's told me a bunch of times that he'd keep my place in front of the warehouse there, picked up, "Oh, no, no, we'll come over and pick that up. We'll get the beer bottles," because, I mean, there's beer bottles strung everywhere out there. I have to pick them up all the time. They're flipped over the back of the fence, so now I've got broken glass all over the back of my warehouse property. I can't drive my vehicle back there, my truck back there, because I'm going to go to flat. I have to drive my forklift back there if I need to do anything back there because it's got the hard tires. They don't care about anything. He's told me time and time again that he would come out and pick stuff up. He has not. I'm constantly picking up the beer bottles, the condoms, everything else out there. It's just been a real pain in my side. This last couple of times, I guess the previous owner has been hanging out there, and he comes in there, or he parks in my gates after I've told him, "Don't do it. Just don't do it. If I've got an emergency, I've got to get back there. I don't need to come looking for you. Don't park in my gates." And he's given me guff the first two times, and then the last time was just, oh, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, because I hadn't seen this red pickup that he was driving, but it was parked in my gates. I walked in the bar, asked him, "Who owns that red truck?" Took a couple of times, then finally, he spoke up. I said, "Well, you need to move it." I knew who he was. I done told him twice, "Don't park there." He jumped up, he come over toward me, and he said, "You don't need to disrespect me." Now, I'm going to.
Okay, I think we've got the picture.
Okay, it's just been a real pain.
How long have you owned this property?
I've owned it for a year, and I would like to apologize to everybody. I couldn't find the building, and that's why I was running a little late. I'm very sorry about.
Have you been operating the beer?
I have been operating for almost a year. And as, David, we talked about two weeks ago, and I told him that I was having my meeting today and that my plan in the future was to repaint his parking lot that he has let us use for this whole time. Up until today, I didn't know that he was, had this much discomfort with this issue. I have, once a week, I have somebody come to the, get on his property, because I asked him if he would let me do that, to get on the other side and clean up for the bottles and that. And we do that. If there's a bottle, we pick it up. Yes, there's been parking on his gate. If I see it, I have to move. On my driveway, on the other side of the building, I have problems with the people next door. They own a parking, they own a, they sell cars, and I have problems with them all the time. I have to tell them to move all the time. I think it's just part of the business. I have tried to keep him happy most of the time. I think, I think he used to get in big arguments with the previous owner, but I can't help that. I try to improve my business, the way I do business, and I don't know if you guys have pictures of the bar, but the bar hadn't been painted in who knows how long. And when I first took ownership of the bar, we repainted the outside. We have, we have tried to do all the improvements that we can, and we're not going to stop there. We're gonna, I want to make a change in this, in this community. You know, it's a pretty rundown area, and I am the only business owner that has painted the outside, and I think that talks for what I want to do with this.
Okay, commissioners, discussion?
I have one question. On the beer bottles situation, you said beer bottles are all over your.
Cases of beer bottles. On my, if you're not familiar with my warehouse, it's an old ice house, built in the early 20s by Anheuser-Busch.
Yeah, oh.
I guess just because it was built by them, they get to leave their bottles back there. But it's, I mean, it's, I'm constantly having to pick up cases of empty beer bottles out on my dock, out in the parking lot. There is, it's not protected by a curb or anything, so they can't park out in the street out in front of it. So, I let them park out front. And all I ask them to do, and all I ask the previous owners, and I kind of like to find out why the bar was closed previous to you.
Well, that's not what I wanted. I was asking the owner, I was asking the owner now about the beer bottles. How are they getting outside and?
Well, see, we don't allow alcohol outside the bar. Nobody can live with a.
Are there your beer bottles coming from your business?
We do have beer bottles, yes.
Is the beer bottles out on the parking lot coming from your business, do you know?
Sir, they're.
Just wait, wait, I'm in time.
The business that we have on the other side, they park, they opened a business about three or four months ago, and they park on his parking lot, which it takes from my parking because, you know, we used to use that, but it doesn't matter. They park there, and when they get done through work, they'll go drink outside. Not, they don't come to my bar and buy beer and go drink outside. They'll buy their beer, and I've seen them drink outside his parking lot. I can't help that.
So, the beer bottles are not coming from the side of your operation?
No, sir. No, sir. There might be one that goes in the back, in the back of my property that somebody, you know, that, it might happen every now and then, but I don't allow alcohol come out of my bar. It's illegal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, that's what I wanted.
I have a question. How many, are there, are there other bars in your neighborhood other than yours?
There's one bar, I think a block away, I've looked.
Which way? Towards Harvey?
So, in the south of me. South of me.
Nothing on 23rd Street?
No, sir. And I would like to make a comment. The gentleman, the doctor, can we take the picture back where the map is, please? Do we have a laser where I can point out where his business is? Who's, okay. If you want to move the, to the corner on this, that corner right there, that's where his business is. If you want to go lower a little bit, that's where his, S C I?
C S I.
C S I. That's where C S I is located. If you see my location from his location, there are about three lots away from, we're three lots away from it. If you are, if you are familiar with the area, you wouldn't want to park on his parking lot and walk a block away and then half a block north to my bar. It's irrelevant what he's talking about. We never, you know, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you. Nick?
Well, my question was similar to Mr. Bright's. It was for staff. Looking at our staff report overlay, I don't see any A B Cs on the map in this three-block deal with the exception of one down here in the corner between 24th and 25th. Are there other non-conforming A B Cs up and down the street?
The beer bar that.
Well, I'm asking our staff. They.
Yeah, there are several old non-conforming beer bars and taverns in the Capitol Hill area.
Yeah, okay. Well, I didn't see any along Robinson here, and, you know, I suspected there were some other non-conforming ones.
Other discussion, commissioners?
What kind of parking requirements would we typically have for this size of business if it were going in?
It's one space for 100 square feet, so he's at 1550. He'd be required 16, and his site plan shows 16 spaces.
Well, I appreciate the concerns of the protesters and really wish that there was something that could be imposed upon this applicant to prevent beer bottles from being thrown over your fence, but, you know, to identify that those beer bottles are coming actually from his tavern, I don't know. I mean, but I encourage cooperation.
Of course.
And.
Excuse me?
Yes?
I'm pretty sure that they're not from his bar. They're from his patrons, which sit out in the car drinking and throwing beer bottles up underneath my dock and all that other stuff. They're bringing them from somewhere else. They're not taking them out of his club, okay? But it's cheaper for them to sit out in the parking lot and get drunk than to go inside.
Well, I mean, I wish there was something that could be done.
You know, I really don't mind.
Wait, let me finish. And as far as the issues that are going on with cognitive rehabilitation, on the map, just to the south of you are two, three bars, and this is a block and a half away, and I'm not sure that I can also attribute those issues to this man's bar. And in light of a petition that we received in favor of this application and letter of recommendation from Mrs. Starbuck, I'm going to have to move to approve the application.
One question before we vote on this. The reason you're here, you had a legal non-conforming use on this site, and apparently it was closed down for a while, and you lost that legal non-conforming use, and that's why you're here to ask for the A B C overlay today. Were you closed down to repair the place? Was that, you said you've had it for the last year and operated it.
Closed down?
Right. According to our staff report, that says this tavern has been operated for many years, was recently closed, and lost its legal non-conforming status. When was it closed, and how did you lose your non-conforming status?
I have, I have never lost any.
How long have you owned the property?
Eleven months, I believe.
And was it operating as a beer bar when you purchased it?
Yes, it already was.
So, was it the.
Did it break in business?
Well, so, how did, I guess my question now to staff is how did it lose its non-conforming status?
Is there a paper that shows?
Yes. We were under the impression, that's what he was asking for, that he had lost his non-conforming status. Now, we've also received information from some of the protesters that it was closed for a couple of years before he opened, reopened it.
Before me, maybe.
Yeah, if it was. So, if it was closed over six months.
Yeah, that would have, that would have done it, certainly.
Right.
So.
Not during the period of my ownership, no.
Okay, so maybe when you purchased it, it no longer had its legal non-conforming status. Thank you.
I guess my question would be, was it operating when you bought it, or was it?
Yes, it was.
So, someone had let it lapse, picked it up, started to operate it again, and then sold it to you? That's what it sounds like.
That's, you know.
Okay, now, any other discussion, commissioners? I have not heard a second. Was there a second?
No second motion.
Okay, we have motion and second for approval of the case. Any other discussion? If not, cast your votes.
May I say one other thing?
Is that a thing? Thank you.
Sir?
May I say one other thing?
Sure.
If it got passed, I'd like to say that I don't mind them parking out front of my warehouse. I never did, as long as it stays clean. If you come in there every day, I don't care what day it is, come in there every day, clean my dock off.
You need to have that conversation with him outside.
Well, what I'm going to say is I'm going to pull that parking if he doesn't.
Well, we can't enforce it anyway. You've got an agreement with him. It has nothing to do with that.
We can sign it. We'll go over that personally.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Item three is A B C 712, an application by DeWitt and Sanders from A B C 2, overlaying R4 General Residential at 3100 North Portland Avenue in Ward 1.
Is the applicant here? Give us your name and address, please.
My name is David DeWitt. I'm the owner of DeWitt and Sanders, LLC, applying for an A B C 2 at the 3100 North
I'm given to understand you operate a similar business somewhere else in the city?
I do, for over 10 years, correct.
Okay.
And what?
This, I'm sorry. At 940 Southwest 59th, Q Palace, Billiards and Games. I've been there in that location 10 years, owned the business for 12, but in that location for 10 years.
Okay.
If I can also say something real quick when we get started. I applied for an A B C 2, and I should have applied for an A B C 1, and I don't know what the proper procedure is, but if there's a way we can amend that today, what I'm actually wanting is an A B C 1, not an A B C 2. It was just ignorance on my part. I didn't research it correctly.
We can amend it from here. We can amend your application by your agreement.
To be clear, you want to serve beer and wine. Probably primarily beer only. But you're a beer, you're asking for a beer and wine permit?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what he wants, the application. I don't think, in conversations with Mr. DeWitt, it became clear that his model only really wants beer and wine, not necessarily the broader use that was applied for. Okay?
So, one, one.
You want beer and wine?
I originally applied for an A B C 2. I'm wanting an A B C 1 and requesting to amend that to an A B C 1 at this time.
That's no problem. Does that get any beer and wine?
Okay, no one has signed up, commissioners?
You want to go through your, what's your presentation looks like? Give us a little bit more color about your business.
Okay, it's a predominantly Hispanic pool hall that I own now, which is called Q Palace. I'm wanting to do a Q Palace Dos two and have a full-service restaurant. I'm wanting to do a Q Palace Dos 2 and have a full-service restaurant in the building. It's outlined the entire shopping center, but I'm actually located just at the south end of that, the small part that's just 10,000 square foot. That kind of reads as if I'm looking for the entire shopping center, and I'm not, just a 10,000 square foot building that's separated there in the back, south end of the center there. We're actually only operating in 7,000 square foot of that building, and roughly 3,000 square foot's the restaurant, where the other is going to be a security office, a private armed security office, and the other would be the game room that attaches to the restaurant in the 10,000 square foot.
You said an armed security office?
There's an armed security, a business that would be located on the southmost part of that 10,000 square foot as an office space. They'll be operating as elite. It's separate from that actual 10,000 square foot.
Okay. And that's not your business, not connected to you, it's separate?
It's being leased out, correct.
Okay.
Subleased.
But the application is for that entire dotted line?
No, no, no. And that's one of the things that DeWitt and I discussed about, that, the rest of that is a very large retail slash shopping center area, and that, that is not part of what he wants for his business. If you look on your map, you can see that there's two separate buildings there, and the only part that I understand that Mr. DeWitt wants, and don't let me put, is this little L piece sticking out that goes east and west, that fronts on back to Grand Boulevard there.
Well, then the application should have had the dotted line just on that little L piece.
Correct.
So, if there's anything in the record, you need to revise that to show that this only applies to that little L piece, the ABC 1.
The application is, or zoning is done by the property description, but on the ABC ordinance actually ties it to a leased space or a specific building. So we have to have a legal description to zone, so what you see is the parent tract. We actually will tie that to a site plan and zone just that one building on that parent tract.
But there won't be any mistaken, I mean, assumption by the purchaser of the retail shop that he has an ABC 1 covering the whole thing?
Not at all, no.
No.
That won't show up on the zoning map.
Nick?
Okay. Now I have a question of clarity. The entire building you have is 10,000 square feet.
The entire building that I'm leased out is 10,000 square foot, correct?
Right, and this application is asking for an ABC overlay on that entire 10,000 square feet.
Correct.
You're saying you're going to have separate areas in this 10,000 feet that are leased to third parties, a security company, for example, I believe you cited.
My intent is to, because 3,000 square foot, about 2,500 square foot of that building on the south part is actually, was just a storage, but it is total of 10,000 square foot, and rather than expanding, I was going to lease that out to a security company.
And my question would be then, why shouldn't this application be amended to cover the 7,000 square feet that you want to use for your operation and not have an ABC overlay on some commercial leased space that somebody puts a beer bar in tomorrow?
That opportunity came after I applied. Someone came in and was willing to refurbish that. I wouldn't have to worry, so it kind of came afterwards. It's definitely something that doesn't have to happen if it slows me down.
Okay, but you're good with, with having the ABC only on the 7,000 square feet you're using?
Certainly.
Very good.
Just a fact, I've spoken, I think as you look at this area, and those of you are at all familiar with it, and I talked to Mr. DeWitt about this today, I, we might ask him to discuss some of his history and his prior location, but there has been expressed a concern about other operations in this vicinity. There's been a lot, there's been a lot of problems in this area. And I told Mr. DeWitt yesterday in our conversation that, you know, he perhaps should be prepared with the being painted with a broad brush aspect of the application, but I wanted to be clear for the commission that there's been some concerns expressed about interjecting another bar into an already troubled area, that, because there's, I think, been significant problems potentially with some of the other operators in that particular area. So, again, I talked about that with Mr. DeWitt. I don't know what our level of conversation about that should be, but perhaps he should potentially address some of those issues, at least so we have a fair understanding of what the issues might be.
I'm familiar with the area, and I know what you're talking about, but when I looked at his application, and I'm not trying to speak for you, sir, but when I looked at this application, I looked at it differently. Yes, he's, he's selling beer, but this is not a club or a beer bar. This is really more of a pool operation, and therefore I didn't have a problem with it.
Right. What's your hours of operation?
10:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
And you have a menu for your restaurant?
I do. I supplied one, and I also brought the lady that is going to be doing our cooking, who's ran bars in the past and restaurants, full-service restaurants, and she'll be actually operating the entire restaurant for me as well as staffing it. So it's apply a menu. It's a tentative start, and I'm not, I'm not the cook. She is, and it's a, it's a very authentic Hispanic restaurant that she's going to be putting in there. She can, she can attest to what the items would be there to validate it's full-service restaurant.
James, did you have something? You look like you... Okay. Any issues at your prior location?
None that I'm aware of. I've been there over 10 years. We don't have, we have never had an issue. You know, you've got your, it's a, we do serve beer there as well. I mean, you do have, but no, no kind of major problems ever there.
Mr. Chairman, are there any protesters?
No one, no one has signed up?
Mr. Chairman, I have an approval with the change to the 7,000 feet holding, as has been previously noted, that it just applies to this one building, or 7,000 feet of this one building.
And ABC 1?
No, ABC 1, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item three as condition. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item four has been continued until May the 13th. Item five is another ABC of 711, an application by Cafe 501 for Class and Curve, a front ABC 2 overlaying C3 Community Commercial District at 5825 Northwest Grand Boulevard in Ward 2.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Peter Holloway, 511 Claygren Drive, Edmond, Oklahoma.
And are you replicating your restaurant on the Boulevard in Edmond, or what are you doing?
Yes, very similar to the same restaurant in, in Edmond.
A question is from, for the staff about this application. You're not the owner of this property, are you?
I'm not the owner, no.
And my questions really have more to do with the Class and Curve and the proliferation of ABC applications within that development. As you may recall, when the PUD for the Curve was before us, they actually set aside restaurant spaces, and so sort of upfront let us know that there were going to be a certain number of restaurant and, you know, to be realistic, ABC spaces that were part of the Curve. And maybe it was just me, but I thought that there was a certain amount of reassurance attached to that, that they were wanting to let us know upfront that these were going to be spaces, but that, you know, they were very concerned that it not become a restaurant row, if you will, that it not become overpopulated with ABC uses in particular. And I did ask staff to look for me at the number of uses that have come forward since then. It's interesting that the property owner is not here today, but that's kind of been their posture with respect to these applications that have come along after the PUD, that they don't want to, oh, I don't want to put words in their mouth either, but, no, no. I guess I would say expend their own political capital on trying to get them approved, and maybe that's, maybe that's just my own take. I don't, like I said, I don't want to put words in their mouths. But the 501 is a great restaurant. I really like the one in Edmond. I'm glad to have one a lot closer to where I live. I don't necessarily have any problem with this particular application, but as I have on the 105 degree and as I will with the others that come forward, I do want to voice a bit of caution about the number of these uses in this area. You know, the Class and Curve is certainly designed to be a showplace, and I'm hoping it's going to be a showplace for something besides ABC overlays, so.
I think that, do you, how much, do you have an idea, JJ, about how much that space is? ABC, just since the question's been asked, not that I oppose this particular application. Have a view on where it is.
I recall the total square footage of the Class and Curve development is 88,000 plus, and they're at about 19,000 plus ABC with this application, so around 22% ABC use.
JJ, question, this was generated, I guess, by staff. The four places that are actually colored in with red, were those a part of the original PUD application, or have they been all, all been approved since?
No. The original PUD application for Class and Curve included Building A and D. Since that time, Building E, I believe, is the 105 degrees. That was a spud that was added to allow ABC 2 use, and now this, this application.
Well, and Building B is Republic.
Right.
And that's, am I correct?
I don't know where they are.
Right on the north end.
The north end?
Their building runs east-west on the north end of the... Okay. I guess one could argue that this is merely a continuation of the Western Avenue Entertainment District, for lack of a better way to put it, because, I mean, quite frankly, Mr. Holloway, this has nothing to do with your particular application. We digress momentarily, but now, as you can see, is we have a significant amount, as Janice said, of ABC uses, not necessarily in the Curve area, well, including the Curve, but across the street, you have a restaurant right there, obviously at the corner there of Western and Grand Boulevard. Back to the south and the west is... Pearl's? Isn't that where Pearl's is?
No.
Pearl's, and then at 63rd and Western, you have another two, three, or four uses, so, I guess from Western all the way to Whistler, you can get a drink pretty much wherever you want. Now, again, not, but that is somewhat of a continuation of those, that particular entertainment district, only we all, they all get there by car.
Continuing on with a digression, that, and not knowing anything about the leasing agents or anything that's going on with this at all, that these four locations that are on this map in red, in connection with the entire unit development of Class and Curve today, doesn't seem to be excessive, and, and, you know, if the success of your restaurant, and I've, you know, I love the restaurant in Edmond, and the same thing, they're high-quality restaurants, the, what was it, the 105 degrees is way cool, I mean, my, I mean, it's just, you have, and you have that environment attracting that clientele that can pay the fare, you know, it's not cheap, that can pay the fare. My opinion, this is where the leasing comes in, draws a certain clientele to the retail shops that will open up in conjunction with that, and I think of Highland Park in Dallas. There's restaurant, 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 bar, and then every other store you can think of, all enclosed in that area, and, and I frankly, even though, I even like the signs that are going up, except one of them's too bright, but I really think that this development, an interior circulation, great landscaping, you know, all the way around, I think it's a great location, and so that's my digression, and...
Well, do you want to return that in motion?
Yeah, I have approval of the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that, if we haven't already used up our quota of ABCs on the last two applications. I share what Bob said. I, this, yes, they're all in cars, but we have a good infrastructure there, have a good center, and we're, this just needs to go forward.
And they're all ABC 2s. They're all restaurants with alcohol. They're not bars and pool halls, and they're not open till 2, well, maybe they are open till 2:00 AM, I don't know. I haven't stayed up that late, but... Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, cast your votes, and you are approved.
Thank you.
Nick, you didn't vote, did you? Nick? Make it unanimous. Yeah.
Excuse me? Thank you, appreciate it.
Bring a steak down, too, if you want to.
Item six has been continued until April the 22nd. Item seven is SPOD 554, an application by Gabrielle Hernandez to rezone 115 Southeast 59th Street from C3 Community Commercial to SPOD 554 in Ward 4.
My name is Gabriel Hernandez. I did a building for, as a convention center, event center. I applied for mix, beer and mix beverage. I just want to give my license for that.
What are you going to put in there? What kind of...
It's for wedding receptions, looking people that want to get married, have his party in there, and it'd be open, I don't know, whenever they tell me they want to get it in there. But it's only in the weekends, on Saturdays. Most of the other weddings is on Saturday night.
Well, that was going to be one of the questions. The staff points out that they'd like to understand what your operating hours are and the days during the week when you would be operating, so that it functions as a convention center and doesn't become a nightclub.
No, it is no nightclub, no. It's only when, if you want to get married, you know, they rent it, the place, just get his reception there, and...
At what time in the morning would you open and what time at night would you close?
Whoever they rent the place, they become by 6 o'clock enough evening, and it closes at 2 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
It's not open every week, it's only when have it, event, reception.
There's no protesters?
No.
Making motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item eight is C4855, an extension of the preliminary plat of Deerfield Estates in Ward 4.
Do we need Ross here to explain it? This is the first request. We typically grant them...
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item nine is PUD 1414, an application by Allen Engineering to rezone property north of Southwest 89th Street and west of Southwestern Avenue from PUD 1392 to PUD 1414 in Ward 5.
My name's Charles Allen, excuse me, Allen Engineering. We originally plaid, or zoned this with PUD 1382 with 11 duplex units and I think 18 mini-story units through the design process, even submitted a final plat, but the design of 87th Street and extending sewers to the north, about 800 feet, didn't make that, that project economically feasible for the developer, so we've kind of backed up a little bit. the utilities will make their way, way to this property. I've read the staff report, and would like to discuss the roof pitch, got a little larger view of the elevations we provided with the PUD. If I could just hand those out. We're just kind of concerned about the eve height on this development. We, we kind of came up with a little table of roof pitches there. These, these buildings range from 20-foot width to 80-foot width, and with the 512 pitch, which we're using actually on the 20-foot, then we're dropping down to a 412 on the 30-foot buildings, we're getting approximately a 5-foot eve height. And these buildings are only 8 and 1/2 foot tall. The 30-foot wide one, I think, is actually 9 foot tall. However, when we get to the 80-foot wide building, if we continue to use a 512 pitch, we're going to have a 16-foot 8-inch eve height on top of an 8-foot, 8 and 1/2-foot called building. So it's, it's going to look a little top-heavy, I think. It's also going to stand up 12 feet higher than, than the buildings around the perimeter. So I'm not sure we're really wanting to, to give that kind of massive size to our neighbors. So that's why I've kind of proposed that, that table to reduce eve height, so we're, I think our 80-foot now would be 6 and 1/2 feet, I believe. T number two, I didn't, forgot to label that, that's my fault, but obviously agree with that. T number three, we're, we're wanting to work with staff. We're, I think in our final exhibit that we submitted, we're removing an island, doing some striping of some other parking spaces to provide access back to the back of the property through the salon. I know staff's got a, an exhibit in there with a tractor-trailer, trying to get behind the building. You know, we, we're not looking to have any tractor-trailer traffic trying to even get back there. Even during construction, we'll probably be delivering this on, all the materials on flatbeds, so we're not, you know, we're definitely going to have fire protection access, but we don't, we think it's a little unreasonable, I guess, to have the semi-trailer tractors trying to get behind this building into mini-storage units, so. I guess we'd like to, and, and the cost of improving 87th Street, I know wouldn't, wouldn't be, you know, would make this project unfeasible also.
What's your frontage on 89th Street, and what's the separation? Well, actually, you don't.
Well, we, we do. It's just not shown on there. We're, the AutoZone, the auto parts there, we're next to that, same size as that. We're 175 feet, I believe. And there's also cross, there's a cross-drive between the auto parts and the salon, so we, we kind of have two entrances out on 89th Street.
Charles, you, the application says the personal storage buildings will be allowed on property lines and shall serve as screening for the project.
When, when we did the original PUD-
How's the back of a building going to screen me from something next door?
It's going to screen from seeing through the side. When we, when we did PUD 1392, one of the requirements was to move our building, one of our, the building on the south to the property line so that, you know, we could block the view and not have a narrow 5-foot strip of land, you know, that would be difficult to maintain. So we were just trying to do the same on this one, on the west side. There are two 10-foot easements on the west side, so the adjoining building, if wherever it developed to the west of us, would, would be 20 feet from our building. Oh, and, let's see, the fences, the fence is on the west property line now, but the actual section line is 10 feet over to the west. So we were just trying to be kind of consistent with what we'd submitted before.
Okay, and then the other question I had was reference in here to an electronic sign. It's a little confusing to me. Says if electronic message display signs are utilized, they shall be limited to operational one. Are you going to have an electronic sign or not?
We're not proposing one. That was staff verbiage that they had us add to the PUD.
Well, if you're not proposing one, can we say there won't be any? I guess that's my question.
The only sign that we're showing is on the elevation right now. We're planning on having an office in the strip center that actually faces out on 89th Street, so any signage would be part of that building.
Thank you.
Charles, what will the back of that building look like, this backing up to the property line behind the president? Is this what view, that, that's his west view, west elevation number one?
Yes, sir.
That'd be west elevation number one?
Yeah.
It's, it's two, I think they're 155-foot long buildings.
Yeah.
I, it'll, well, it's a metal building with a exterior masonry veneer on it.
Is this brick columns or some type of-
It'll be a-
Precast in between?
It'd be a precast brick veneer, not, they haven't decided if they're actually going to use brick, but it'll have their brick appear.
It'd be, it'd be in accordance with your development, the 70% brick or-
Yes.
Eiffel's or-
Yes.
I think it'd be good to have some kind of green to break up that long facade, at least. I'm okay with that as a fence, and I wouldn't, I'm okay with not having a real steep-pitched roof that overpowers, but it needs something to soften that, some type of plants. That's why I think that buffer strip is good to soften that.
I, I think they'd be a drill. We just don't want to try and, and put a fence, a 5-foot buffer, or whatever it might be, then a, then a wall, where, you know, it ends up being weed and trash collecting back there, not maintained.
So if the, but if the storage building go away, then would you put a fence up? Because we need that separation. What happens if the storage building-
There's an existing fence right now, so, on the, on the property line.
It is?
There is. We were just, it's kind of, it's a, you know, it's grown in, a tree's grown in it. We're just trying to, try and clean that up a little bit, actually, so.
So you're taking it down?
It, yes, it would be taken down.
And then you're going to use the back of this building?
That was the plan.
Well, then we need something to soften that. But if this building would ever go away, then we would, I guess it would come back if we was doing something different. But I'd like to see something green to soften this.
Okay.
I, I want to be, I don't think I understand, frankly. So on, oh, I see. So you're building small units, one, one-sided, along the, the backside there, and that?
Correct, correct.
Oh, okay.
The design of the, the temperature-controlled buildings is to have the exterior just open, regular mini-storage, no climate control. Provides a kind of insulation to the interior where they have the climate control. And when we have a narrow space like that, it's just, it's unclimate, it's just simple.
So if I'm a residential person that lives back to, I guess that's the west, then what I would see, if you take that fence out, is this long, exposed metal, build, row of buildings, is that right, what I'd see?
Yes. Metal roof with a, a masonry veneer on the wall.
Masonry on the wall.
What is that? I mean, tell, I mean, help me with masonry finish on a metal building?
Ah, it's a, it's a hardy board that's got a texture, masonry texture to it, concrete texture, typically is what I've seen.
It's like Drive-It type stuff, similar.
Is it subject to peeling off? I mean, is it, I mean, does this come off of the metal?
Not, well, it's over the metal. You'll have the metal sheeting, then you'll have, then that's either a half-inch or an inch thick board, I'll call it. Not, not wood, but-
What color would it be?
I, usually it's kind of a stretch down.
The concern is, this, is this backs up on people's backyard. You know, you're right on the property line, no setback.
Well, it's, it's actually 20 feet. There are two easements there.
An easement on your side, an easement on their side, right?
Correct.
And they're, can you plant trees in easement?
There are existing trees in the easement right now, yeah.
Will you tear those down? Will you cut them down?
Prune them. I mean, we're going to save the trees that we can.
Well, I guess that's my question. Are you going to save the trees, and are you planning on, I mean, we, I, my requirement would be that you plant trees every, and then some shrub reeding, because you really are doing-
Well, we get, we get more credit points, I guess, for-
In the back of a building with Drive-It or whatever it is, that if that was my line, if, if I was living to the west of that-
Mm-hmm.
And looked out every morning, and there's this, you know, long line of a stucco building with a tin-pitched roof, and that's it, you wouldn't like it either.
Well, and again, going to the alternative use, is if it comes back to the alternative use, you've got to provide for screening. So why don't we just do it now, so we don't have to argue about it later?
Yeah.
That's what James's point was, I believe.
That's fine. I don't have, I mean, we're going to, you know, if we're going to have a buffer in there, we're going to save the trees that we can, just because we get more points for saving a tree than we do for putting in a little 2-inch tree anyway, so. I mean, it only makes economical sense to save what you can, and infill that with your smaller trees.
I want to know, I don't know how many you're going to save, but no, I just want to ensure that, that we have built the back away from the property line where we can get a nice, consistent row of trees in there. And maybe we need to, maybe we need to give us a, a site plan on it. Maybe you need to continue this and give us a site plan on showing us these things like colors, where you, how you're going to do your screening, the trees, the spacing. So maybe that's what we need to do, continue this and give you a chance to provide us more information to make a decision on it.
I, I'm not opposed to that, though. I'd, I'd like to move ahead as fast as we can, whether staff would, whether you trust staff to review that, so that we're not continuing for another two weeks.
Well, staff brought this to us.
Pardon me?
Staff brought this to us, so we'd, we'd like to look at it, I think. I think we'd like to look at it.
Okay. I was just trying to move it on a little faster.
Sort of move it on. Well, we need to hear from the fire department, too, on your proposal regarding 87th Street. Fred, if you want to.
Just want to clarify on the, your, Fred Calhoun with the Fire Marshal's Office, glad to see you all. Clarification, you said that in the back, you were going to provide access for fire apparatus. Now, I just want to get it clear, I'm talking with the staff at City about the tractor-trailer thing. That's not a tractor-trailer, that's a fire truck. They're talking about getting around back there, as far as in the back. And you're not going to have a secondary access, it sounds like, on this. So, you know, this is more, I'm not opposed to zoning of it, but I am going into the building side, looking at strongly, have a fire lanes fleet around the buildings and stuff of that nature, unless it's you sprinkle the buildings or something. So, I don't know, and I'll be glad to talk if it continues to look at alternatives. But that's going to come up in the building side, you know, later on, not so much the zoning side, just to be prepared for that.
Okay. But it sounds like you want at least a couple of weeks, Mr. Allen, at least.
While you're taking those couple of weeks, I'd like you to consider what you're going to do about your lighting. You've got this wonderful standardized language that we use on these applications, but since you really do back right up to these residences, I'd like to know sort of where the lighting is going to be placed, and how it's, how it's actually going to be kept from protruding off your side and onto the residential sites surrounding you.
Okay. Two weeks would be great, thank you.
Give a motion and second to move item nine to what date? The 20-
22nd.
22nd of April. Cast your votes, and you're continuing two weeks. Thank you.
I've got a question of the staff on storage. JJ, does our, well, just, let's just take this, for instance. Is there any provision, or does our ordinance limit, or is there anything provided for open storage such as RVs, trailers, cars, things like that, that is not actually in an enclosure?
Does the ordinance allow for that?
Do they have to have, does the zoning have to, to indicate that, or is it just automatic, or?
If it's just a, a RV storage, it would, it could be open or enclosed.
Okay, so there could be RVs and old, old cars and boats or whatever in this storage unit without it being actually specifically indicated?
Charlie's providing for everything to be enclosed.
Okay, oh, everything, so it does have to be enclosed?
In this application.
Okay.
Right.
Could it provide for open storage?
The ordinance does, yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, my question.
JJ, before you, sir, but we've had several people come now, especially on mini-storages, and talk to us about this roof pitch thing. And my sense is that as we were trying to come up with a way to actually describe objectively what residential appearance means, we came up with this pitch. And my question is whether we need to revisit that, staff-wise, or whether we should just go, continue to deal with it on an application-by-application basis. I like the idea of the pitch. I like the idea of there being a formula, but it seems like there've been several of these recently where they've, for one reason or another, it hasn't really worked out. The formula hasn't applied well.
Right, right. The pitch that you originally adopted with your guidelines was for just a standard, small, strip, mini-storage building. But we're seeing enclosed buildings with hallways and larger buildings, and as that building gets wider, it's going to push that roof way into the air and stick out more than I think the design guidelines intended.
So do we need to revisit the guidelines, or should we just deal with it on a case-by-case basis?
That's totally up to you. We'd be glad to look at it, if you'd like.
So what do you think, guys? Should we revisit our guidelines, or should we just limp along here for a while and see how many of these are problematic for us?
I think we'll roll with it for a while, and before we try and make yet another set of rules. Next item, Russell.
Item 10 is continued until April the 22nd. Item 11 is to introduce a separate public hearing on April 22nd, an ordinance relating to outdoor storage and display of tires.
So we need a motion to set. We have a motion and a second to set. Item 11, cast your votes, and that is set for April 22nd. We now go back to a presentation on stakeholder groups for Plan OKC, which was item six in our study session.
Hi, Susan Miller with the Planning Department.
JJ, while I'm thinking of it, this is the person to call on item 12 when it's rescheduled. Thank you.
Okay, I just don't have anything to write on. Once you guys start talking. I think I passed my notes page up there, sorry. Oh, that's okay. Well, no, but I, okay. Well, if you guys start having comments, I'm going to have to go get some paper, because I don't have any up here. Okay, what I need to do is just give you an update as where we are in Plan OKC, and talk a little about immediately what our process is, our steering group. Most of all, what I wanted to do is kind of introduce to you our process for that, for stakeholder groups, and kind of plant the seed with you, and give you some time to think about what stakeholder groups you might want to participate on. So I'm going to talk about that for stakeholder groups and then upcoming events. And just as a reminder, these are the plan elements that we're looking at for Plan OKC. And the reason I gave you a paper copy was so that you would have this, as well as how we kind of broke up our stakeholder groups. Okay, so what we did, we're trying to be efficient with people's time in just addressing issues, identifying issues and solutions and everything. So we, instead of having different stakeholder groups for each element, we tried to sort of group them in ways where we thought there would be a lot of overlap. And, you know, we got kind of creative with the little square, circle, triangle. So the square stakeholder group, you can see, that's the- of group them in ways where we thought there would be a lot of overlap, and, you know, got kind of creative with the little square, circle, triangle. So the square stakeholder group, you can see, that's the Sustain, Connect, Green, and Strengthen, which is the land use, transportation, the environmental, and the economic developments, because so many of those issues already overlap so much, those are hard to really separate out anyway. So that's gonna be one stakeholder group. Next is Enrich. This is the Preservation, Appearance, and Culture Element. It's, it's unique enough that we can deal with it by itself, I think. And the triangle is Live, Play, and Serve, which is the Communities Element, which we're hoping to address a lot of neighborhood planning issues. Play, which is Parks and Recreation, and Serve, which is Public Utilities. Okay, I'm just kind of introducing those concepts, I'll tell you more specifically about them. Later on, which I'll get to in a second, we also are creating a Healthy Communities Subcommittee or Stakeholder Committee, where everything is involved. We've been, there's a lot of stuff going on in Oklahoma City, a lot of interest and a lot of movement toward healthy communities, the public health and planning, kind of the merging of those principles and policies. So we're looking at those. We've got a lot of interest of public health officials to participate in this committee, you know, because everything together creates a healthy community. The transportation system, the environmental situation, the land use policies, it all works together. So this is sort of an overriding stakeholder committee that will look at everything. All right, so now, I've sort of introduced those, but let me tell you how those break down and when they kind of come up. In April and May, this has actually changed just this morning, presentation to City Council to introduce Plan OKC and our, kind of what we've said to you before. It used to be Tuesday, now it's gonna be the following Tuesday, April 20th. We have launched our online website, Facebook and Twitter. Still very, very early, there's a lot of work to do on that, but at least it's out there at this point in time. There's gonna be an announcement in City News in the water bill for April and May. And city staff working groups are starting to meet next week. And we're breaking city staff working groups into these, into the three committees, and to the, you know, the square, circle, triangle, not the, the Healthy Communities is gonna come a little bit later. On May 6th, this is a real important meeting, this is our formal kickoff meeting for the community, it's gonna be held here, May 6th, at 6 o'clock PM. We're identifying people to send personal invitations to, we're gonna get the announcement out in as many ways as we can. May through August, we're, we've created what we call a Plan OKC Presentation Circuit. There's about half a dozen of us in the Planning Department that are trying to get groups to identify, you know, if they want us to come and speak, trying to sort of go into existing organizations and agencies that would want to hear our presentation, rather than holding just separate meetings for people to come to us. We want to try to go to them and really try to introduce this and engage people who aren't typically engaged in the planning process, because as you know, we sometimes get the same people, and we want to try to get new people. So this is our approach of doing that. Stakeholder Groups Forum, and this is when you would become involved in these stakeholder groups. So this is, we're really thinking of late August or early September for the stakeholder groups to start meeting. So I just kind of wanted to plant that with you, start thinking about which of these groups you might want to participate in. We haven't really even gotten to the point of specifics about the meetings. Generally, we're hoping to keep all meetings to an hour, and not more than one every three or four weeks. We're really trying to be efficient when we have the meetings, so that we're focused and we achieve what we need to when we meet. July 2010, I hope at this point, come back and get your feedback about what your interest might be, what stakeholder group or groups you might want to participate on. Of course, you know that we have to, have no more than four Planning Commissioners on each, so that's something we'll have to work through. And we'll also just give you a status update at that time as to where we are and things that are going on. Fall and winter this year, we'll just be meeting with the groups, and then this is our information for the website. Like I said, we're on Twitter and Facebook also. Any questions or comments?
Start meeting in early September instead of late August, you'll get more participation, I would think, but.
Yeah, yeah, right, I know. We kind of tried to, in fact, our city staff working groups should complete in early summer, and we thought about just picking up and thought it would probably not be a good time to start them in the middle of summer, so.
I'd wait until right after Labor Day.
Right.
When everybody's back and gets in gear again.
Right.
Including us.
Okay.
Well, particularly us, for all I know. Thanks, Susan.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, Planning Commission Committees? Commissioned members?
I got, I got a comment to make, and if you could, go back to item number eight, the display of that subdivision. And this is just a comment, maybe for the staff, and just a general comment for myself. I'm getting concerned with saturation of lots that aren't developed, I mean, they're sitting. And from Choctaw Road West, and from, well, actually, the interstate, because if I'm not mistaken, we've got a development that's in, that we've approved to the north of 74th and to the west of Henni, and then we've got another development, I mean, to the east of Henni, and then we've got another development west of Henni. And then you go over to the next mile section, I mean, we're getting a lot of saturation of one-acre tracks in, in that area, and it really is starting to concern me. And if you remember, to the north, at 59th and Choctaw Road, we've got a huge development there. We are, or the Department of Transportation is getting ready to completely redo I-40 and Choctaw Road. I mean, and it looks like probably starting somewhere in 2000, probably in 2012. And like I say, a lot of these lots are vacant, and, you know, and still, from a developer's standpoint, you know, economically, I don't see how they're seeing these things and seeing a way to build houses on them and sell them. I just don't, you know. So it's something that, it's a concern of mine, and I think that's something we really need to take in consideration from this day forward, not only because of septic systems, but wells, and private wells, and all of these are on private wells.
Not to be dense, but you're saying that it concerns you, that there is so much raw land currently, that it will become overdeveloped with one-acre tracks?
We've got, like I say, where it shows AA up here above 74th Street, if I'm not mistaken, that is a development. And I think the one adjacent to that, that little pie shape, it's not, but the one to the west of that is, and to the west of Henni is also developed. It didn't show it on here, but it's approved and ready to go, if you will. Plus the fact, there's a lot of vacant lots that are in those subdivisions that are, you know, sitting there vacant, nothing built on them. So it's, you know, it's getting to be really a, I think, a saturation problem.
I understand the saturation, but help me understand the problem with this saturation. Is it, what is the problem with a lot of lots that's not being developed on, I guess? Are we approving too, you know, what, help me understand that.
Well, number one, if, you know, if all these lots do develop, and, you know, we probably are gonna have a water problem. And, you know, it's something that I think that, you know, maybe, I've always been an advocate of water out east, okay? Here, we've got Draper Lake out east of here, and we don't have but one water line, one 12-inch of water line that goes a half a mile east of Douglas Boulevard. That's it. Everything else goes north Oklahoma City, we sell to Edmund, we sell to Yukon, we sell to all these, from Draper Lake. And we don't have any kind of water east of Douglas. That, you know, fire protection and so on and so forth, and I'm, you know, I'm getting concerned with all these vacant lots, that when they do get developed, we're really gonna have a problem out in that area, so.
Well, then, do you think that it was a mistake for us to approve this extension?
No, I think probably, you know, you know, I think we're okay here, but I think we sure need to watch any new stuff, I really do.
Well, but this was an opportunity to say, it's over.
I mean, I'm. Well, I don't know if you want to say it's over, but I think maybe one-acre tracks, that may be, that may be the, you know, the case, and I think we need to start looking, you know, if, if we do get new developments, and suggest that we go to larger tracks.
Well, this is, and the Southeast Sector Plan designated all rural. This, this whole area is.
Pretty much, yes.
Where this is.
Yeah.
And so that's, you know, if it's AA, it's five-acre tracks, and that's.
Well, actually, there's a triangle, and I don't, I've already thought on my map a way, there's a triangle, but that we've designated as, I can't remember exactly what the designation was, but it was for residential development. And that triangle was consisted of I-40 from Douglas Boulevard all the way out to Choctaw Road, and then I-240 from Douglas all the way out to Choctaw Road. That triangle was, you know, the thing that we actually set aside for residential development. But there again, you know. Right, and, you know, until we get some kind of water or fire protection, even in that area, I think it's a concern. Where did our fire department go to? If you remember, and this may be one thing we want to require here in this thing, if you remember the last development we did out there, they volunteered to put sprinkler systems in their house, okay? That's one of the reasons why I was an advocate of that subdivision.
Going back to our study session a little bit, we spent, and the staff has spent a great deal of time talking about appearance, community appearance, and as long as I've been actively involved in messing around with city things, which I hate to say goes back to about 1986, code enforcement has been a real problem. And if we talk about signs, a whole lot of signs would go away if the codes were enforced, including lots of things that are put up as temporary banners and flags and so forth that create real eyesores. And then just generally having community codes enforced, and I think we might want to consider, A, some sort of a resolution to the council that we think this is a really important thing that they ought to be doing. If we care about community appearance at all, we ought to be enforcing the codes we have. And just a case that came to my attention, and I mentioned to JJ the other day when I was on the Board of Adjustment, we approved a site for particular use and required that dumpsters be consolidated and be behind the building and be enclosed and so forth, and this is on Independence and Northwest Highway, and there's, somebody's put a dumpster on the side of the road facing Independence, no gates, and then the dumpsters that are in the back are in an enclosure that's been damaged, and the dumpsters sit outside the enclosure. So, I mean, we're just, if you want to talk about things that are just plain ugly and impact the appearance of the community, and we're not doing a darn thing about it. And, you know, the issue is municipal judges who don't really want to be very aggressive, which discourages municipal counselors from prosecuting, which discourages inspectors from pressing very hard and turning things in, just all backs up. But we've got a history of weak-to-know enforcement, and, you know, we spend a lot of time on these boards and commissions. The staff spends a lot of time and works very hard, and we don't get any result. And I think we ought to do whatever we can, A, as a commission, and B, as individuals, to maybe impress the, impress upon the city council people that this is really one of the major things that affects the appearance of the city.
You know, signs have created a new vocation, and I just realized that a couple of weeks ago. A waiver. You know what a waiver is? I asked one of the guys at our church.
People standing outside.
I said, what do you do? And he says, I'm a waiver. I said, a waiver? What's a waiver? He said, well, I stand out in front of the street with a sign waving.
Commissioners, any other comments?
Are you, are you suggesting, in fact, that we pass a resolution?
I'm suggesting that.
For everything City Council to.
Yeah, that's a serious concern of us on the Planning Commission. I'm suggesting we consider it, and let them know that, that's the great big weakness in everything we're doing.
Hear, hear.
Okay, Planning Department?
That issue's been looked at many times.
I know, in my 20-odd years of messing around, I've.
I don't know if there's ever been a summation, I don't know, Susan, if you know if there's been a summation of what those obstacles are. It might be useful to start with that, at least, since it has been.
You may not want to say out loud what you think they are, Susan. Because Susan and I have talked about some of this, what, over a long 20-year period, I think.
There's just a big gap between the number of, you know, action-centered complaints and the number that, you know.
Are resolved?
Resolved.
Addressed? Anything else, Russell?
I don't think so.
Development Services Department, JJ? Susan? Okay. No citizens to be heard, have a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.